On public safety in the Miller Brothers complex, public safety complex. We'll open this discussion with the administration. Okay?
They're not here.
We're going to start with Bob Mars.
Okay.
And then we'll move into PNC and Mars.
All right, good to know. Thank you.
Yeah, good afternoon. I'm Bob Mars and I have Adam Trapp with me. And Adam prepared the schedule of activities that went on starting back in March. Why don't you go through your schedule there, Adam?
Yeah, thanks for having us. So, the project started in March when the city brought us onboard. We went through preliminary, design development, construction documents. The project went out to bid in parts. With the impending season of winter coming, we broke out the roof from the rest of the project and we bid that out separately and got bids in July's. And we have since signed contracts, had a pre-construction meeting just today. And so they're off and running. The idea is to replace the roof ahead of the rest of the project because if we get the roof on, then the rest of the project can continue on when the winter comes. So, that's what we're doing right at the moment. We'll go over numbers here for a second. We had two estimates done on the Phase One Erie Fire Department Service Garage project, 22,000 square feet plus or minus. And the initial estimate from preliminary design was up around nine mil. We have since then taken the project through design development, had another estimate, and that estimate came in at 8.4 mil. When we broke out the roof, if you take the trophy point estimate and you break out the scope of work that we have bid right now for the roof that we have under contract, their estimate was a little over 1.4 million. The bids for that work ranged between 1.1 million and 650,000, give or take. Okay? We vetted the low bidder. We took the low bidder because they met all the requirements. So, we're ahead of the game on this first phase, cost-wise. If you look at the other bids, this low bid was an outlier. So, they got vetted pretty heavily, right? If you look at the other bids, they're around 1, 1.1 million. Trophy points estimate was 1.4. So, we're coming in ahead of the costs. If you look at, the low bid was $738,000 less than the estimate. The other bids that were close together were still 375,000 below the estimate. So, our early indications are that so far, we're doing well compared to the estimate. Now, as it stands right now, so if we take trophy points 8.4 mil estimate and we replace the roof repair that we just bid out and have contracted for, it reduces trophy points estimate using all their other figures from 8.4 to 7.7 mil. So, we're pushing. We're pushing the number downward. We won't know how the rest of Phase One does until we get the bids. And the bids are due October 2nd. The bids will go out at the end of this week and we have a pre-bid on site on September 11th and then bids are due on October 2nd. At that point, then we'll know what the rest of Phase One costs. And so that's where we're at with this.
Can you give us a Rudy's Digest on Phase One? What does it include?
So, Phase One is the Erie Fire Department Service Garage. And that is getting everything that the fire department, with exception of a few offices. It gets all their garage functions out of Marsh Street and into the facility at 23rd and French. It's a wonderful relocation because the space is what they need versus Marsh Street. They have to compromise. They don't have height and all that stuff, so they do what they do to get their job done. This will enable them to do all their job under roof.
Is there a ballpark figure?
Say that again?
The bids coming in in October.
October 2nd.
Is there a ballpark figure?
Well, according to the trophy point estimate, we would be 7.7 less, so around seven. Around seven mil is where trophy points sitting right now after we take out the roof repair part of their estimate.
The money needed would be seven plus the 1.4 for the roof. So, we're talking, what, eight and a half?
Well, trophy point was at 8.4, but that was with 1.4 for the roof. But the roof is actually 680,000 plus or minus. So, with that factored into trophy point, that takes a trophy point estimate from 8.4 to 7.7.
How did that happen?
Bidding. It's, when you estimate, estimators definitely don't want to tell you a low figure because then they get crucified for selling you short. So, they estimate conservatively, but I'll tell you, the construction industry is a real potluck game right now with all the tariffs and lack of staff being able to build materials or build buildings, you know, the trades are hurting. So, there's a lot of dynamics right now. Fortunately, the way it worked out is we got a bidder who was hungry and they're a family-owned business. So, they have a lot of their costs are in-house. They're not farming out stuff. So, you know, it saved us a lot of money. One of the things we wanted to vet was, hey, this is a public works project, it's got prevailing wage, all that, you know. So, we checked into the history of these guys. These guys do a lot of public work projects. They're out of Buffalo, so it's in New York State. But they've got universities and public works projects under their belt. So, you know, it's a good fit for what their work experience is versus what we need them to do here.
Will they take in consideration the minority percentage that we look at?
They would if they had any subs. They're family-owned business and they do it all in-house. So, they are not going out to hire subs to be responsive to that. And they did ask about that early. And we told them, well, you know, it's a goal of the city. If you're hiring any subs, you want to see some activity. And, but they don't have subs. They do it all.
And I also think that you made a great point too is that this, I mean, saving money is phenomenal, love it, right? But this was probably an outlier in that this much of a saving, we can't really expect, especially with tariffs and everything else that are going forward. So, this part, we don't, we probably won't see that replicated with that big of a, that's like two-thirds versus...
Right. The, when you compare A1 Construction and Painting is the successful bidder, okay? When you compare their $684,000 bid to the 1.4, that's 52% under the estimate, which is quite a number. If you look at the bidders that were real close together, just a little over a mil each, they're still 26% under the estimate. And those are companies we all know. So, you know, early indications are encouraging. They're not a guarantee, but they are encouraging.
So, outside the roof, because we see that we have approved to have that done, you've bitted it out, it's going to save money. From the 7 million that we still have in the Tier One phase, what all is included outside of the fire being in-house? Is that just the fire? Because I know it's like three different phases of them.
It's just the fire department service garage. And it includes chief mechanic, equipment cleaning, the evidence room, and the dog suite for Horace. Horace is awesome. So, yeah, it includes them. And other than the offices they have on the north side of the building and that one little extra piece on the north side of Marsh Street, everything else is coming out to French.
Plus, it includes all new siding at French Street, exterior siding, insulation, windows, and new rising.
Yeah, when you get into the scope of the Phase One project, essentially, we take the building envelope off, down to steel framing and concrete block face wall. And we completely redo an energy-efficient envelope. So, repurposing that building from just a metal skin shell with one and a half inches of bad insulation that's badly deteriorated from age, you know, we're putting in a five-inch thick roof, a three-inch thick wall system, all insulated, it's metal sandwich panels. I mean, yeah, it's, the whole point was mitigating operational costs down the road, so. The other thing that's really nice about this project for the fire department service garage is it gives them a much healthier working environment. Part of this project is a big ventilation system. So, the air changes in that garage to keep the particulates out of the lungs of the mechanics, you know, it's, I mean, we have the exhaust hoses, so, you know, they're not getting diesel fuel. But there's a lot of work that goes on in the garage and there's a lot of air changes and we're going to meet and exceed that with this project, so, real happy about that.
That's very good.
Yeah, keep our people healthy.
No one should be working under cancerous conditions. So, get all that stuff out of there.
Yeah, and, I mean, you know, they have the exhaust now, so they're not breathing in diesel exhaust, but, but no, it's going to be a much improved environmental condition inside that building for them, you know? So, we're real happy about that.
Do you have any kind of timeframe when that Phase One will start?
Yeah, it's kicked off today. There's going to be some downtime because we have shop drawings of the roof system. And it takes time to do the shop drawings and then to manufacture and deliver them to the site. So, we have a number of weeks that nothing's going to happen on the site because it's all being done in the back room and over the internet and all that stuff. What we want to do is make sure that when we determine the date that they mobilize and we're waiting for the dates from the manufacturer of the roof panel on that, when that's determined, then we'll back out what they need to do before they receive the roof panels. And that's when we disrupt the fire department's current use of that space. Right now, they just, they keep some stuff in there, they keep some vehicles, they have some training apparatus in there. So, I don't want to upset that until we're absolutely ready to go. So, we're going to, we're going to condense that and then we anticipate that the successful bidder of the rest of the project will probably have a little bit of overlap with them finishing up the roof. Because we'd like to get those people in there to do some of their infrastructure work and everything, as long as they can play well with the other contractor, you know, then we'll, the first phase of the roof will kind of slide right into the rest of the project.
So, barring any bad weather, we've allocated, I think, December 1st or something or so to finish up the roof project?
Yeah, technically, their contract goes to late December.
December 29th.
But we're pushing to see how much we can expedite that. And it all comes down to this roof panel manufacturer. And the reason why this one is who we're going with is because their lead time was like two-thirds to half what the other manufacturers were. This one's being made up in Michigan. Falk is the name of the manufacturer. And when they came onboard with those kinds of figures for lead time, we're like, oh yeah, we'll take all the advantage we can get, you know?
Is there a cost effect to them if they don't make their time?
Oh, a penalty?
Yeah.
There is no penalty built into the contract.
Then how do we know they're going to do it?
Well, the references. When I checked their other public works and their university works, people said that they performed in a timely manner. And they also said that they were good when something comes up on the site to troubleshoot, which is a big personal thing for me. You know, no project's perfect. And you want a team that will really work as a team when something comes up in the field. And their references came back glowing for that, so I was glad to hear that.
Thank you.
So, the timeline from start to finish for Phase One is what?
So, the overall project finished late August. So, the transition from finishing the roof and gliding into the full bore of the rest of the project, that's going to happen somewhere around late November into December and then December on, or late December on, then the other, whoever the other successful contractor is, will be carrying it through to August. And there's some, there's isolation measures that are being done so that what you will see is the contractor of the roof will take over that parking lot in the middle of the block. And they'll have access to the parking lot and our project area in the southeast corner at 23rd and French. And that's the extent of their access into the site. The rest of the site is secured off and then when it's handed off to the other contractor, they'll have the same situation. They'll have the yard, they'll have their structure, the 22,000 square feet we're doing now, and that's it. Everything else is secured off.
So, they don't have to close the street?
Not unless they have a situation with a crane. There's a big steel beam, a big steel girder that we got to get out of there. It's in the way of the new work. And it's part of that failed roof area. See, we were going to leave it in place because it's twisted, you can't use it anymore. But it's in the way of our new roof plane that we're establishing on the north half of the building, so we got to get it out of the way.
Today, we did talk about sidewalk closures when they need to do that, safety precautions, so.
Yeah, street, if there's any closures in the street, it would be East 23rd Street because the beam they have to take out is in the west part of the building, so it's kind of buried in the block, you know? We don't anticipate anything of French Street. And then, like Joel said, we did permit that if they need to close a sidewalk off because they need to get up on that side of the building, you know, then, then we're okay, you can close it off just to a limited extent. Because their question, and this came up during bidding, their question was, do we have to make those scaffold protectors on the sidewalk? It's like, no, because you don't want to build it for three days and then take it down, you know? So, we've got it where, yeah, you can just block off the sidewalk during that short period that you need to do that, if you need to do that.
That isn't a route to collegiate, that's my only worry. So, if that does get blocked during the school time, making sure we have a safe route for the students who might be walking up. If it comes to that stage, right, I would think making sure the students have an accessibility because that will be right in their walk zone.
Yeah, so we'd want them to go on the east side of French when they are in the project area. And we also stipulated, you can't block off Steven Burger. So, they got a good membership. We want to be nice with those guys.
Is there a possibility the same construction company will bid on Phase One as well?
I bet they will.
Yeah, they did show interest. They showed interest.
I bet they will. We'll see how they do. You know, before this project, they had like five bid projects that they didn't get. They were higher than the low bidder. They were just getting more and more hungry, so, and that's why you have bidding.
And we do have performance bonds and payment bonds in place for 100% of the project. So, if there's any problem with them, if they would fail in any way, then the city's protected with 100% payment bonds, performance bonds. And then we regulate how much they get paid. So, we review their work. We only pay them the amount of work that they do and then we hold back 10% until they get to at least half the job. And then we hold back 5%. But, so you're always protected with more money than is built into the job all the way through.
Yeah, and that's pretty common in the construction industry, so common that sometimes I forget to even explain.
Clears the air a little bit.
Fills in the gap.
Yeah, you're not going to, I'm going to have no penalty for being late, then I'm going to be late. It's like school, right? If you come in late and they don't say anything, you're going to do it again. That's all. This is average man's concern about it, that's all. But I understand it since Bob explained it.
I mean, I think everyone is open to the idea of new companies getting an opportunity to, you know, participate and seeing how they perform. So, I would like to know, you know, how the project goes, just because it's always nice to know that family-owned businesses are stepping up and, you know, accessing these opportunities. Participating in the bidding process can be intimidating, especially because it's a lot of paperwork more than likely. And a lot of people don't like to deal with that. So, I'm happy that someone is trying things. I know this has been a need for quite some time. I don't know if there were specific questions that we needed to ask, but I know that this is going to be the time to find out anything that we might have because this is an issue that's on the agenda tomorrow. We're going to be voting on the bond and if you guys or ladies have problems with anything, now is the time to do that.
Total bond is what, 52?
I think that's round two of our special guests that are coming. We have another set.
This is a nut and bolts.
Yeah. That's where all my questions will be too.
So, do we have any more questions for the roof or the Tier One phase of the development?
No, I just wanted to say that Phase One is my main concern, mine personally. I am pro-public safety and all of us want the fire truck not to break down on the way to our house if we have that issue. So, Phase One sounds good to me.
I mean, I like the idea of them being able to operate in-house whenever they're maintenance-ing their machines and the building being tall enough for them to actually, you know, use the machine, the building, to access because right now, they're in a smaller building and they're not able to use some of the space.
Yeah, they have to do it outside.
They have to do it outside to get the ladder. It's difficult.
So, they don't have to in this new building?
Yep. So, that's one of the reasons why I've been in favor of it. I know it's an expense to future taxpayers, but it's a need, especially with the current building's infrastructure, you know, deteriorating under them. That's kind of alarming as well.
What's the, I know up at Marsh Street, the one of the concerns was the flooring and stuff like that in the building. What is that like in this new place? Is that something that...
It's all slab-on-grade. There's no basement underneath, no lower level, so it's ideal. Yeah.
Do we have any asbestos issue?
Not in this phase.
That's not an answer.
Well, because, because we don't, we're not doing the rest of the building right now, so.
There will be problems.
We did bring an environmental consultant on. They did what's called a Phase One analysis on the entire property, which we do have a report. I think the report was shared with the council. It's about a 700-page report detailing the potential environmental issues with the site. And then we also had our consultant do assessment of the 20,000 square foot area that we're focusing on right now for the, for the fire department. And their results came back actually pleasant, minimal.
Well, essentially, there were four items in the current Phase One Erie Fire Department Service Garage part. One is the light fixtures, metal halide, HID, and fluorescent, they have to be disposed of a certain way. There was a little bit of mold in the west mezzanine, so we had to alert them, hey, you know, if it's bad enough, you got to protect your workers, okay? This, these bidders own all this. And then there was a little bit of lead content in the metal panel siding and roofing. But it wasn't the kind that alerts, sends up alarms, but it was there. So, we shared that with the contractor and the contractor owns appropriately removing those, those materials, you know, how, and it's up to them to determine what their practices are because they answer to OSHA, so.
Bring them look at asbestos, too.
Yeah, there wasn't any asbestos. And we tested, I think, either 19 or 20-some different materials in that building just to be sure.
In Phase One?
In our 20,000 square foot section. And what we don't know is the remainder of the building. We did get a budget from our consultant, what that would look like for the remainder if the project came to fruition. And the proposal was around 35,000 for the analysis, environmental analysis, testing samples. Not abatement, but looking at everything and sampling.
That's a high ceiling budget. Like, they said, you know, it could get as much as this depending on what we start finding, but...
So, if we finish the whole project, what kind of nut are we talking there?
Oh, we, there's so many unanswered questions.
No way in the horn.
I think the city did a study early on of the whole building. So, we haven't done the study.
So, we don't know how deep the hole is, that's all, you know?
Do you know how close we are to finding the 35,000 to do the environmental study for the hole?
That would be initiated when there's an approval to proceed into the next phase.
So, Phase Two?
Yeah. Yeah. The total site environmental Phase One study was kind of a little bit in addition to what we're actually doing, that southeast corner. So, we had the environmental guys there, it was talked with the city and we decided, oh, have the Phase One on the whole site. Let's get it done now since they're there. But further studies than that are a lot more involved, so, you know, we held back on that.
Any other questions? Concerns? No, I feel confident with their content.
Yeah. I mean, the fact that they were able to save so much on the roof just by going with a lesser build, I'm bitter. I'm happy with them trying to save costs because this is going to be a big expense for the city and the taxpayers.
You're fortunate enough to get the best, so, that's what we're getting. Thanks, guys. Pretty good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Be careful of the edge of the stage.
We don't know what we have to...
I know. You got to tell us.
Can you take 56 million?
I don't want you not being able to ride your bike.
That's all the bonds still.
That's not the part, this is the part that scares me, the next part scares me.
Any other questions? Concerns? No, I feel confident with their content.
Yeah. I mean, the fact that they were able to save so much on the roof just by going with a lesser build, I'm bitter. I'm happy with them trying to save costs, because this is gonna be a big expense for the city and the taxpayers.
You're fortunate enough to get the best, so that's what we're getting. Thanks, guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Be careful of the edge of the stage.
We don't know the nut we have to cut.
I know. You gotta tell us.
Can you take fifty-six million?
I don't want you not being able to ride your bike.
Good, how are you?
Okay, thank you very much. I don't know if everyone knows everyone, I know I don't, so I'll melt with this bone.
My name's Alicia Henry. I work for PNC Capital Markets, and I serve as your investment banker when you do bond issues. So I'm only here when you need me, and it's a pleasure to be here and have this opportunity to have this setting for you guys to ask questions, and I would urge you to interrupt me if I don't speak clearly or if something isn't understandable, please. Thank you.
Once again, I'm Tim Wachter with the Knox Law Firm, sitting in for Tim Senet, and I can confirm that we have worked for a very long time with Alicia, and we're very happy with the partnership on these deals. Where helpful on our end is the bond attorneys to help structure this, to help get the local government unit debt act approvals in place. But Alicia really does the lion's share of the work in putting the numbers together and getting the underwriting out.
Thank you, Tim. My handout is on the projector, so I'm going to tell you when I'm turning a page, so that the public can also follow along with our handout. If you could flip past the cover to page one, since I haven't met a lot of you, I thought a good place to start would be... Yes?
Here.
We got one.
This is the city's existing debt. This is a nice one-page summary, and I also have an appendix in the back of this presentation as a fall behind or leave behind that's greater detail than this. But on the left-hand side, you have your bonds listed by series, that's how we sell bonds, series of the calendar year it was sold. Original par, par is a fancy word in bonds, it just means principal. Outstanding balance is the amount of principal still owed on those individual bonds. The final maturity is the last payment of each of those individual bond issues. And the call date, different from a bank loan, bond issues do offer the bond purchasers call protection. We do monitor your bond issues for refinancing capabilities. We can refinance on and after those dates. You'll see that your 2015 bonds are callable this November. It's something I keep in contact with Lisa about. Those are very small amounts, and I don't foresee those producing any real savings. The bulk of your bonds you'll see at the end, your larger bond issues are callable in 2029, and there could be greater refinancing opportunities at that time. As of today, the city has fifty-three million, five-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars in change of principal outstanding. And for those of you who don't like numbers, there's a bar chart below that's color-coded by the series of bonds. And you'll be able to see through 2032, just to remind everyone that the city was able to prepay nearly eighty million dollars' worth of debt through fiscal year thirty-two from the Erie Water Works lease prepayment. And the city's debt goes out currently till 2039.
Just so I'm reading this, this means how much we're gonna pay on the side, right? That year, we pay this much?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Any questions on page one? All right, then I will flip to page two. And these are more bond legal laws that Knox and Tim make sure that we follow, but this is a summary of what we're looking at. The city is looking to complete certain capital improvement projects, most notably renovations to the Miller Brothers building. Tax-exempt general obligation bonds provide a flexible, cost-effective financing option. The proposed structure of the series of 2025 bonds is to fund a project of thirty million dollars, which I understand would cover all three phases of the Miller Brothers project. We look to wrap around the city's existing debt service to minimize the budgetary impact. And I'm going to show you options that involve capitalized interest, where the city can borrow all or a portion of the interest during construction to help phase in the debt service. You're legally permitted to capitalize interest during construction plus one year. Everything that I'm discussing today assumes the city's current bond rating, which is single A, underlying with standard empires. You have a stable outlook, and that was last reviewed in January 2025, so that is in good standing. The funding of a bond issue typically takes seventy-five to ninety days, and federal tax law requires a commitment to spend five percent of the proceeds within six months, which by having Miller Brothers, or having Roth Mars involved would meet that test, you would have to spend eighty-five percent of the bond proceeds in three years.
Confusing question, I guess. You just told me that it's gonna be thirty million dollars to do the project, and when we had the boys in here, they couldn't give me a figure. They gave you a figure of thirty million?
I was given the figure of thirty million.
Okay, I just, everybody was here when I asked the question, right?
And they couldn't tell us, yeah.
That's worrisome.
Let's say it's not as, could we spend that money also on streets, too?
No. So what we're doing is a not-to-exceed amount right now, so we're getting an authorization on a not-to-exceed, and the final number will be met at closing. You have to spend the money on the projects that you expressed specifically in the offering statement, which has already been prepared.
Just to clarify, so Roth Mars only did phase one, so they can only give you an amount for phase one. But Plaid Boswick did the initial cost estimate, it was thirty million dollars for the whole project, and that has still been consistent throughout the whole project.
What happens if you have leftover money and you used it all on the project to...
You mean if the project's paid before the money is done, or before you've used all the money?
Let's say we used all the money, the project's done, or we haven't used the money. We've, we have some money left.
So the project came in at twenty-five million, and you have five million dollars left over?
Right.
We can use that money to pay it off, or take a look at some other options at that point for other capital projects that may be approved. But unless we're able to put that specifically in the offering statement in the specific of the ordinance, I would caution against spending the money on different projects. How you spend the money affects the tax treatment that we're speaking about with this.
Thank you. Alicia, can you explain non-bank qualified to me?
Yes, great question. Non-bank qualified is a term specific to bond issues. Ten million dollars is a calendar-year benefit. Bank qualification allows banks to purchase the bonds and write off a portion of the interest. Since 2017, the Jobs Act and tax cuts and the corporate tax cuts, bank qualification has become less of a benefit because of the corporate tax payments have decreased. So we used to focus very particularly on trying to force bonds to being bank-issue, but we've seen bank-qualified rates not trade any different than bank-qualified rates right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further questions on page two? Page three. Four and five are all very similar, and I'm going to try to explain to you exactly where I'm talking so that I don't confuse you. It's a busy page, I understand. So page three, on the left-hand side, you have the light green heading, debt service schedules. The first column is your existing debt service that carries over from the bar chart on page one. Column two is the pro forma or expected debt service payment on the proposed thirty-million-dollar bond issue. If you take the existing debt service and the proposed structure of the 2025 bonds, the light green column would be the new debt service budget for the city. If you look on the right-hand side, the assumptions I'm using is, again, a project-size funded thirty million dollars to the city, closing somewhere in November. All of your principal due dates are November fifteen, and assumes the city's A-rating with a stable outlook. And now, if I could take you back to the second column on the left-hand side, I want you to see, follow the one-point-five-seven million dollars all the way down to 2039. And then you'll see the payment step up to five-point-seven million. That's what a wraparound is with bond issues from fiscal year twenty-six to thirty-nine. That's essentially an interest-only loan. The Department of Community and Economic Development, as well as the Local Government Act, it requires me to sell bonds that are level and declining, so I am allowed to wrap the debt service around when the existing debt service of the city is all paid off and start amortizing this bond.
What are we currently, so this, the one on the left, just, I just wanna make sure I'm following, is what we're paying right now and what we will pay?
Correct.
And then this'll be, so right now, like, we're paying, like, one-point-six, so almost one-point-seven?
Yes.
And 2023, that will go up to almost, almost eleven million?
Correct.
Well, I hope I'm not dead by then, but...
I hope you're not, neither.
They said that way too loud. When the old guys make jokes, you forget the hard hearing.
I've been doing this twenty-five years now, but when I first did this, I'm like, I'll be alive when they pay these bonds off, and now I have to pray about that. But I want you to see that the debt service on the left-hand side, that's what I'm working with. If I just add the one-point-five-seven million dollars, everything that you're seeing in the light green column is those two columns being added together.
So let me ask, you'd said that we were able to refinance debt in 2029. Will that affect how the wraparound works if we end up stretching out some of these, some of these balloons of the nine-million-dollar payments?
That's what I'm hoping, that there'll be useful life left in the assets that were originally financed, that I would be able to restructure, and those payments that are looming in 2023 would be able to be refinanced and smooth out those bubbles.
Okay.
What was originally financed? Like, what is the, I know that was, sorry.
Fifteen.
Because you said that.
Wasn't ready for that one, doctor Titus.
No, but let me see.
What things are we trying to remain useful?
I'm gonna look it back. I'm gonna probably have to have Knox. If you go in the way, way back, page nine, past all these pages in the lower right-hand corner, I told you I had a leave behind, which is the existing debt portfolio of the city with a little bit more notes.
Which page did you say, sorry?
Page nine, I'm sorry. If you look on page nine, each individual blue box is an individual bond issue, and if you look down, probably three-quarters of the way down, it says purpose. The 2015A was a refinancing. The 2015B was a refinancing in new money, so we could look into the 2015B and see what that new money was. But if you flipped to page ten, the seventeenAs, the nineteenAs, those are all refinancings, and you can see how far back some of the debt traces back. So, for example, on page ten for the 2017As, it's not likely I'd be able to stretch out something from 1998, but it is maybe more likely in the 2019A, something done in 11, 12, 15. Those, we'd have to go back to Knox and dig through legal documents to see what was actually financed with those. And then they would, they don't let PNC just refinance, they would tell me what the longest maturity I would possibly be allowed to do legally to keep them tax-exempt. So that would be something obviously we would, we could bring back to you.
And oftentimes, the ordinance adopting the actual debt authorization lists what the maturity, the useful life of the asset is. Sometimes we say in excess of forty years, depending on what it is, but we'd have to go through each individual bond issue and make that determination.
Okay, so if it was like what Counselor Nelson had said, like, streets, like, some of that had gone to use for that, probably not useful life left in...
Probably not from 1998.
Right, okay, so, okay.
No, but you're getting an idea. Assets, like, there's also times where the asset outlives its useful life, and if you're still utilizing that asset, then you can get a certified engineer to get Knox comfortable that there is useful life in that asset, so that's what we would have to do to prepare for fiscal year 2029.
So my brain is, I just wanna make sure, so we don't fully know if we can, so those balloon payments that we're asking about possibly could re, get some usefulness out of things, but if it was used for the streets, probably not?
Correct. It would also depend on what's going on in the market at that particular time, and you would wanna deal with your financial advisors and PNC to try to do a determination as to whether it'd be reasonable to do so. If you took the money at six percent and bonds are trading at ten, maybe you don't wanna do that. You have to do a cash flow analysis versus the total investment that you're doing. We don't advise on that ourselves, but there's a lot of decisions that have to go into the question of whether you're going to do refunding.
But please know that's something we would work very closely with you and your administration to help you with.
And if you want, I can, I can start digging through the bond documents and get you a list of what the projects were that were refunded that are outstanding.
I mean, we have to vote on it tomorrow, so unless you're pulling an all-nighter, I don't think that we'll get it by...
Wasn't planned, yeah.
No, right. So big decisions will be made, but yes, I would still like to know, because even this column will still be here to exist, even if this one doesn't, this one won't.
Would you see that, all of us receive that, please?
Yes.
Okay, everybody back to page three? So what I'm going to do after page three, I'm gonna show you two more options, so I want you to focus now on the bond statistics. The total budgetary impact of a thirty-million-dollar bond issue with no capitalized interest, which means the full freight of this bond will hit your next budget year, is one million five-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. You'll see in fiscal year twenty-seven, it's zero, and fiscal year twenty-eight. So this is how you fund the bond issue with no capitalized interest, but there is no phase-in, it does hit your budget immediately. The next two options, I'm gonna show you where it doesn't hit in all one year, it will hit in multiple years, and what the cost to do that is, what the give and take is of being able to phase it in. So, did I go through this in a way that you were able to follow? Because the next couple pages look exactly the same.
Think so.
Okay, thank you so much. Then if you could flip to page four, you'll see that this bond issue contemplates capitalized interest, which means the city is borrowing money to help pay interest during construction. So column one is exactly the same, nothing changed. Column two is slightly more expensive than the one million five-seventy-five, and the reason for that is column three, capitalized interest. You're capitalizing interest to help through budget year twenty-six and twenty-seven. And that is really the only difference between all the options I'm showing you in the very near-term budgets. So if I could take you to the bond statistics on page four, the budgetary impact in fiscal year twenty-six on this option is zero. You're borrowing one-point-seven million dollars to make all the interest payment on the new bond. Fiscal year twenty-seven, we create a two, a two-equal phase-in is eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, and fiscal year twenty-eight is a hundred-and-sixty thousand. So this is what we call like a two- or three-year phase-in, however you look at it. These are examples, and I can work very closely with your administration on how to fit this best in your budget, but I'm showing you how flexible the capitalized interest is. And during construction, if you say to me, Alicia, this is what we can afford in our budget, I can capitalize interest down to the dollar to meet the increases. But I do want to explain that there's a cost to that, because I have to borrow that interest.
How much difference is one percent as far as interest? Say the mark gets much better?
Probably about...
I don't wanna hold your feet to the firearms.
Well, now, if you want me to do math in my head, and we're at five percent, and we're at one-point-seven million, I'm gonna say this is almost... I'm gonna say this is almost the interest. A whole percent's gonna take you down probably three, four hundred thousand. Because we are looking at twenty-year paper.
Great.
And then if I would take you to page five, this is what you call full capitalized interest, just so you can start seeing how the math works. Page five, again, the existing debt service, is exactly the same. The twenty twenty five is slightly more expensive because we're now capitalizing interest for fiscal year twenty six and twenty seven. And then if I take you to the bond statistics, the total budgetary impact is one point seven seven million. No budgetary impact in fiscal year twenty six. No budgetary impact in fiscal year twenty seven. And you're shifting all the budgetary impact to fiscal year twenty eight.
But may I ask a question? I'm not sure who I'm asking it to. Do we vote on these options sometime soon? Like, this isn't, we're, we're not voting on the various options tomorrow. Do we vote on an option there?
No, you can vote on it. You can give direction to me up until I sell bonds, which, how you want to do this.
Which of these options?
But do we as council do that, or does the administration?
Yeah, so that's part that I don't know. I have not voted on bond ever before. Do we ever make that decision, or do we just leave that decision out in the air? We leave that decision out in the air?
So the decision that you're, the ordinance that's on your docket for tomorrow is a, an ordinance to issue bonds in an amount not to exceed?
Yeah.
Fifty-two million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's all it says. I mean, that's all I read.
The specifics of how you do it and these various options are, what Alicia's trying to show you as to how it's going to impact your total debt service. So you can influence the administration in the manner in which you influence the administration, but.
But all three of these options fit under the not to exceed. When Tim and I were here a few weeks ago, you build up the not to exceed so that I can structure the bonds in the way that you want. Right now, I'm wrapping them. I'm showing you how I can capitalize interest. The not to exceed tomorrow will cover any of these options. How you interact with the administration, I'm not, I'm not sure. And that's something you guys.
So, so you're saying that we cannot vote on phases of the project based on their costs?
No, that's not what I was talking, that's, that's not what's being discussed. The, the three options that were being presented, we don't actually make a decision on that anyways. We're ju, she's just offering us potential outcomes of what it could end up being like. But we're not going to have any say over those three options. Those aren't ours, are, those are not our options to choose from.
So we're voting on the total package?
Yeah, and it makes a big difference on our budget next month that we start looking at. I mean, this one has, would you go back to option one?
Well, actually, could we go to page six?
Sorry, yeah, yeah, sorry, thanks, sure, sure.
Because I think this is really gonna paint a picture because I'm, the reason why I added the capitalized interest options weren't in my original packages because the bond issue's gonna close towards the end of the year. And it might, I understand that fitting this into the budget is something could take more time than what you have to work with. So page six shows you the three different options. Option one is the new money financing, no capitalized interest, has the lowest total budgetary impact over the life of the bond. Budgetary impact, but it will happen as soon as the next budget you're working on, one million five seventy five. Option two is a partial capitalized interest. I can actually make, this is how flexible capitalized interest is. I can take this number and I can make three equal phase ends, or I can give you no budgetary impact in fiscal year twenty six, and even budgetary impacts in twenty seven and twenty eight. And option three, the most expensive, capitalizes interest completely for two full budget years. So you'll see the total cost and the budgetary impact in total, there's a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year to do option two, to change from one to two. There's a cost to doing the capitalized interest and having that phased-in approach. Is, is that what you were hoping?
Yeah, so, so what I'm, like, when, I mean, because we're gonna be looking at the budget in two months. And, like, I'm, I'm going to want to see option one, the cheaper option that costs more in the twenty twenty six budget, though. Like, that's what I'm gonna want to see in the budget. Rather than to, to have a one-year avoidance of taxes, to, to look clean and with, and kick the can down the road immediately when we're already seeing quite a deficit. Like, I'm gonna want to see option one in the twenty twenty six budget when we see it in two months, as this is getting sorted out. So I'm, I just want to make that clear if this bond passes, that that's, that's what I'm looking for in the budget.
Are currently, I know we're in the process of getting a new analysis from PFM. But that might prep up an administration question. Do we, like, what is our capacity for debt service? Like, do we?
I think we're at two point six for next year.
Two points?
Off top of my head. We just had it.
Two hundred and sixty million capacity?
Thanks, I'm good.
Is that what you mean, the legal capacity, your debt capacity? Or was it a different kind of capacity? Yeah, your debt capacity is actually your last three years of revenues, and you average them. And Lisa and I did a kind of a back-of-the-envelope. That averages to about a hundred and three million dollars. Then you multiply that number by two point five percent, and every city in Pennsylvania lives by these same rules. You take your last three years of revenues multiplied by two point five percent. That gives you roughly two hundred and fifty-nine million. You subtract the fifty-three million and change that you have outstanding, and that's your remaining debt capacity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have some questions, but I think maybe we want to ask administration. If we turn this bond down, are you telling me we don't have the money to do phase one? To make sure that the fire department has, has your thing? You have, I've been looking at buckets of money for six years now, and I'm not too sure what's in those buckets. We're saving money for parks and recreation and repainting bike lines that shouldn't be there any, I, I digress, I'm sorry. I just want to make damn sure that, I want the fire department to have phase one done. If you're telling us by fact that we don't have the money to do phase one without a bond issue, I'll accept that. I still will not accept thirty million. I'll accept at a maximum ten to cover, cover that part because I think that's very, very important, that the fire department have, have a place to house what they're doing. But these are, these are figures. And I know you, you guys are great. I'm, I'm.
Oh, no, I understand.
Putting you in the middle, and it's not, it's not fair to you because I know you could be home with your families, as an example.
No, I just hope that I'm giving you all the information that I could think of, that I, you would want as council members to make the decision.
Right.
The, my brain is sort of really struggling wrapping around. So in less than ten years, we are going to be expected to be paying ten million, a little, I mean, almost eleven million back in less than ten years. And I have no idea where that's gonna come from as a city. We, we're struggling to pay our streets. We're struggling to keep up with the services that we offer. We're going to double what we're gonna be asking taxpayers to help us pay back in. And I fully agree we need phase one, fully agree. We can't, like, it's not safe for the, we, we need this to happen. My, my, we're taking a huge, like, it's, we're hoping that the markets trend in a way that we could refinance this, but we don't know. And that's, the, the burden is going to fall on taxpayers. It's gonna fall on taxpayers and services. When you look at by twenty twenty three, we're doubling what we're gonna be paying back. And that has to come from somewhere. That has to come from what we offer in the general fund. And I, and that's the other part that I'm, I'm struggling with this is we, we need these, we need these things to happen. We have to, we have to have fire, we have to have police. This is, this is a, this is huge, what we're gonna be asking of our residents that are, that are hurting right now. And that's not a, that's just where we are.
No, I understand.
It's just where we are.
Now, and just for the record, though, too, that ten million dollar debt service is already there. This item is not adding. This number does not get you to that ten million dollars. This is adding, you know, a little more on top of that. So the cliff that you look.
So that was bigger than ten million?
This, this doesn't affect it, this is later.
The ten million's here.
I know, but I will still be alive and in the city and paying into taxes. And so, and as I hope everyone else here will be, just for the record.
Yeah, so, so it's, existing is nine point, in twenty thirty-three, you're gonna be at nine point two six three.
Yes.
And then what is being suggested is that one point seven be added to that.
But then they're from twenty, twenty, or from twenty thirty-three to twenty thirty-nine, we're at ten million, almost eleven million a year.
Correct. But I just wanted to have it stated that it's not this issue that's adding ten million dollars.
No, 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 yes.
It's just a little bit on top of what's already existed.
But it'll extend then, yeah.
Right.
Knox Law Firm has done this before for the city of Erie.
Yes.
You haven't had any major problems with us paying things. They've always made their payments, yeah.
I, I am not aware of any defaults, correct.
A staple is a good grade to have.
Correct.
A teacher gives a student an A when they do well. You have had a good working relationship with PNC Bank. They are a staple bank to respect and do business with.
Correct.
I don't, and for me, this, that's not at all in question, at all. I think, I mean, this makes sense, I see it. Where I, where I keep coming back to and where I am stuck is, is the Miller Brother project in a hole, right? We all agree, and I don't think there's any dispute around phase one. But what we are saying is to take out this, this entirety to pay for a project we don't fully know the full parameters around. Once we vote forward, there is no going back, right? If the Miller, I mean, this whole project. So if it is out of the parameters, we don't have the complete environmental assessment. If there's anything that is more than, we're locked in, we're locked in. Well past phase one, we're going all the way through. Tomorrow, our vote is, it's, it's that. I think that's where my frustration is, is we don't fully know the scope, but tomorrow, we lock in. And if we, if we lock in, we're in it for the long haul, whether it is a benefit fully, all the way through, or not a benefit. And we are asking the taxpayers of the community to, to saddle this burden the whole way through, whether it's, it completely makes sense past phase one, or if it doesn't make sense past phase one, we're in it.
On, on that note, how much, how much expense is it to issue three bonds and do it in each of the phases? Like, where, where is the, is there a benefit to doing this all in one lump sum? Or is there a reasonable solution that we fund phase one, work on that, finish that, issue a new bond for phase two? You know, it's expected that we're looking at a twenty-five basis point drop, maybe fifty if the job report comes down, you know, out poorly. You know, there's, there's lots of reasons to think the interest rates might reduce in the future. Like, is there, is there any benefit to doing this all at now when we could be doing it in phases, since the construction's not happening all now?
Sorry. The only reason you would look to phases, finance this all right now is to save on cost of issuance. But there are certain cost of issuance that are fixed, that you'll pay multiple times. But there's also, I do multiple projects that are broken up in phases as you implement the different phases, so.
Back of the envelope this with me a little bit. Like, what, what kind of numbers are we talking about over the course of a fifty million dollar issuance?
I would say somewhere around seventy-five thousand dollars.
Each time?
Mm-hmm.
So, so if we break this into three phases, it'll cost the city a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of fifty million dollars?
Correct.
Okay.
And a ten million dollar project fits within the parameters you're passing? The parameters.
Yeah.
I'll let the attorney talk about this.
So what, what I was jumping to, but you got to before me, is we're doing a not to exceed tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
So before we close, if you say it's ten, we can do ten.
But we can't. That's it, like, we as council cannot say that, right? Once we pass what's on the agenda tomorrow, we've already put a to exceed. Then we've taken ourselves out of the picture.
No, we can amend it to ten, can't we?
Well, the document that you'd be passing tomorrow is an ordinance that we would be submitting to the Department of Community and Economic Development for the purpose of having the debt authorization. Once it is finalized and we actually issue the bonds, we will then communicate with the department to let them know what the actual issuance cost was so they can properly hit your debt schedule. How you would amend, I, I don't think you could amend this ordinance after we apply.
We have to make a decision tomorrow morning. And I will not, I myself will not vote for that, the big bond right now. For seventy-five thousand, I'm willing to bet that we would save that seventy-five thousand on the interest rate change a year from now, the way things are going, unless war breaks out.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all I'm saying. Besides that, a new administration's gonna come in, Democrat or Republican. Let them be wrestling with the rest of that. My main concern right now, again, is the fire department in phase one. And I would go with the ten million, and I only speak for myself. I wish I knew our budget better, because I think there's probably money there. Robin Peter, Paul.
Let me think for a second.
I know, it's.
Six thirty, making the work here.
It's complicated. How do you think we feel? We don't really understand this completely. It's being thrown in our face twelve hours before we have to vote.
I mean, and this isn't your problem, but like.
No, you guys are great.
We lost a federal appropriation this year of three million dollars. I mean, there's a bunch of things that we were moving forward under the assumption of, that now we're moving under a very dramatic difference.
Well, this is what I'm thinking. Excuse the sidebar.
Do you want to use the caucus room for a few minutes?
Could we have a, just a brief second? Yeah. Before he goes on the rocker with a crazy.
That door open?
Well, I've been no all along, but if.
I just, I mean, if, if we move this through, I, I, which I'm, I'm not in favor of, I would, where it stands right now. What, what goes away? Because something has to go away because there's no projected revenue that's been presented. Some, there's just the money, we only have what we have. Sorry. I should have, I should have snickers before.
And can you fill me a glass of water, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, so for twenty twenty-six, we've still got about five million in, in the water reserve, water prepayment fund?
Thank you.
So going into the future, I mean, that, that's lasted a few years longer than we expected it to. So, but I'm, I'm gonna say that twenty-six would be the final year for that. So something's going to have to happen after twenty-six. We, we've gone six years without a tax increase.
Yeah.
That's not sustainable. In that six years, inflation has soared. And all of our union contracts have increased every year. It's, it's unfathomable that you could keep not increasing your revenues. But the only reason we were able to do that was that we had that lease, prepayment money. We had sixteen million. And we had a couple of really fortunate years as far as weather went. So we didn't have a lot of overtime, and we had some holes in our staff. So we were two million under in staffing and benefits two years in a row. So. So, I, I guess I'm saying that a, at some point, we have to address incremental, small, um, incremental increases in property tax every year.
There's five mil in the, the revenue water. What kind of money's still sitting in these buckets that hasn't been spent?
ARP.
The ARP? The ARP buckets?
Yeah.
I think there's in the neighborhood of twenty-one million left that hasn't been spent, um, and I would have to.
Is that twenty-one million all light saving projects, or are they?
Four million for parks, probably.
Four million for parks, there's police staffing, um, I don't know the exact numbers off the top of my head, but.
But we know we can afford to do the fire department.
We don't have ten million in there for Phase One, no.
And what is the water reserve amount?
Uh, it's, uh, let's see, four million nine sixty-four, according to my mid-year projection, if we come out where I, uh, projected us, we'll have four point nine million.
It's not the water reserve, it's the water.
Water prepayment, yeah, it's the lease prepayment.
And just to clarify too, on the, the reason why we're going, putting the doggy dog on is because Phase Two is the emergency operations center for police and fire, which is also housed at Marsh Street and needs to be moved. We could go out for bid for the final design of Phase Two this fall. That was in the timeline that we presented to you in the last fifth session, but we can't do it without the funding. So, Phase Two is also slated to be about ten million dollars, so we, we need to have the money to do the final design for Phase Two, and then to implement that part of the project. The longer it takes, the more costs are gonna, the construction costs are gonna increase. So that's why we were looking at it as a package deal to get the whole thing done without having to keep stopping and starting.
Outside of, um, Marsh Street, are there any other facilities that we're looking to condense? Or we're gonna be maintaining all the existing facilities in addition to this facility?
The bomb squad and squad would also move into the, or the, sorry, yeah, in the, Marsh would be moved in.
Where is the bomb squad currently?
They're separate.
Okay. So we, we, essentially, we would condense in, like, two spaces?
Yes.
Okay.
Welcome back.
Hello?
And then, so once they're out of Marsh, Marsh is done?
No.
No?
We are, we still have things in Marsh.
Yes, too.
The idea would be to get out of Marsh, and then you guys know where your first refusal and that problem.
Okay, so what'd you guys sidebar with?
Want me to?
Yeah, I think this is more legal.
So, um, if you're not willing to issue the bond as it has been proposed, and you only want to issue a bond for one phase, then we would ask that you table this, so to allow us to redraft the documents, to put it at the figure that you're comfortable with, and that you still move forward with the Erie Sewer Authorization tomorrow. And then, we can come back and we'll rework the numbers and come up with a different option. If, if the, the fifty-three is not going to work, and it's not going to pass, rather than have it voted down, uh, we'd rather come, or the fifty-two, three fifty, we'd rather come back with a number that is going to pass.
And accomplishes the goal that council wants it to accomplish, whether it's Phase One, Phase One and Phase Two. The, the number fifty-three, as when Tim Sand was here, contemplates me being able to structure the bond. So what I would need from you guys is direction, do you want a not-to-exceed that only contemplates Phase One, or do you want a not-to-exceed that contemplates Phase One or Two? And I have to rework that not-to-exceed number to fit all the options, and that would give you comfort that only what you're voting on would get done.
And we had gone through the, the mental gymnastics of trying to figure out how we could structure phases into this current issue, but until and unless we know what the project's going to be, it's just not, I don't, I don't think it's feasible.
I'll, I'll put my cards on the table for the sake of, you know, understanding that Phase One and Phase Two are coming on right, one after another. I'm comfortable with twenty-five million as a number, as long as we're not doing any capitalization of interest as well. Those are the two things I'm concerned about. I'd like the new money financing. Now, I've voted against it every, at the first two steps. I voted in favor, and we bought the space when I was president counsel. But given the change of some of the climate, uh, of how we were looking to finance this, those are the spots where I, that's, that's the limits that I put on the table for my own vote, but you might get four votes without me on a different number, but that's where I'm at.
If we're doing it, I mean, I would, I would vote this down tomorrow.
Yeah.
As it currently stands.
I would vote for it because I've done the water bond before, and sometimes you just have to take that leap of faith, and.
No, no, she said the whole thing.
I would vote on all fif, yeah.
And I'm with Kathy on that one. I'm in favor of voting, um, as is, to put it on the agenda, but we're just two, so everybody has their vote to do what they need to do tomorrow morning.
Rather take any kind of a chance on it, maybe we should kind of informally agree to table this until we know more about what we're doing.
Is that a possibility, where we table this, this part tomorrow, we have the three options at the next one, where we could put forward, like, twenty-five, ten, with a full?
And I also, I think it's important, the capitalization interest, that we're not, we, there's, there's a chance that we can really set up the budget to look beautiful in twenty twenty-six and absolutely blow stuff up in twenty twenty-seven, uh, the way things are looking right now with the last five million that we have in the water prepayment fund. Like, there's a few things we could do to balance some things out that could, that would leave us in a really big hole. So I'm, I'm very particular that I don't wanna see the capitalization interest upfront.
Dr. Tietz, in my, in my opinion, um, I would prefer not to leave here tonight without those parameters figured out, so that we can put this together one time. And if you remember at the last city caucus meeting I was at on this particular thing, I said, if we're gonna vote it down, let me know today, you know, two months ago. Because, you know, Alicia in our office, we've, there's significant costs that have been incurred to put all of this together. Um, so I would like to have that parameters this evening, um, so that we know what to put together for you.
For me, I, and, and I know we all have to vote our conscience on this, I, I just wanna know then what is projected that we cut out of the budget? And that's not, you guys can't make that one? What we are, what we are putting, we don't have the money to pay for this, so what are we willing to cut? Like, we have to ask ourselves that, like, what are we cutting out of the budget?
Raise taxes.
That won't cover it.
It, it can always cover it. I don't want it to. Up to thirty mils.
So the, the projected debt service is on fifty-three, or fifty-two, three fifty? I mean, if you only end up doing thirty of that, the debt service isn't gonna be that much.
But we, I, where I'm, is we're cut out of that part, we can't decide it anymore. So once, and so we were elected to do a certain part, and then once we opt ourselves out of any power or control in that capacity, we're out of that power and control, like, so that's where I.
If we table it, maybe we can find out exactly what twenty-one million in art money is doing, and how important that is being done, as to how important it is to get something going here with, with our phase.
Well, I know for a fact that I'm not gonna be in favor of moving any of the park and recreation ARP money. We already moved a million out of that bucket, there used to be five, so I'm not in favor of touching that for anything other than parks and recreation.
I agree with Jasmine with parks and recreation.
That's the only thing the city gets.
But I also, we have not raised taxes, and you can't just hold the line forever. You have to do it little by little by little.
Then you couldn't get it. It's gotta be lot by lot by lot, if we go the way we're going right now.
And I'm with you on that, that's why the capitalization part's important. Those three options, that's why that's important. That's a half a mil difference in taxes.
What do you need from us, Escobar?
Uh, sir, I have two yeses, one no, and a request to table to reconvene at another date. There's still two members from whom I don't know which way you're going to go, they're, that would be helpful.
What don't you know?
Mel and Bo.
M and M. What do you, wait, what do you have Ed down for? I didn't have him down yet.
He's a, he's a table.
Yeah, but did you want, did you want us to have a number, did you want us to have a number with the table?
If, if this is, if two votes come forward.
I'm a no for the thirty million.
You're, you're, you're a no for the big, the big shot, okay.
Right now, yeah.
Got it.
Do you have a number that you're a yes at?
I want Phase One done for Lenny, for the fire guys. I would like.
See, and that's, that's my concern.
Ten, ten, ten.
Phase One, I'll be honest with you, I don't care how the hell you get it. You tell me how we get fit.
More than, I think, before you settle on a number, there's more things to talk about before you tell him a number.
It's a plan.
Tyler, you were just no across the board?
Not a no across the board, I'm a no on the current.
Cause there's a lot of money, rent money riding on Phase Two.
I would go, I would go.
Also, taking into consideration, it just depends on what we do here.
Definitely Phase Ones, yeah.
We have their request out for Phase Two of the amount of four million dollars. So if we get that funding and we can't move forward with Phase Two, what is that funding?
And include the congressional.
That's three million congressional corporations and one in the state.
And I'm, but, I'm just, I'm very fr, I'm frustrated, I feel like that we again got kind of backed into a corner here without the full plan. Um, and I feel like that this is, again, being, and I know, this is, there's a lot of federal things that happened, there's monies that were lost here, and I know this is a project that are working, but.
This is what we presented at the last fifth session, I can resend out the power point, but it had all the timelines, the grants, all the different phases.
The bond wasn't, though, like, that wasn't discussed.
What's that?
This, like, the funding model has shifted quite a bit, very rapidly.
We, we've always said that we may not move forward with the funding.
But not for the entirety, that's never been the case. And, and that, that's the, that's the part that you have me with the brakes on. I, I, we always are.
Five million in grants.
Yeah.
Presumably, we may not need that to occur without something.
Well.
Why can't we use the five million grants in the first phase?
Aside the Phase Two. Well.
What's your best advice on the whole thing, three, three phases, what would be your best?
I want to know, I just mentioned this to Tim, if you do have more presentations tonight, and this presentation is in the middle of other presentations. Tim and I are coming back tomorrow morning, eight-thirty. Would it be helpful for you guys to hear the rest of your presentations, and then maybe answer Tim's question tomorrow morning at caucus?
Yeah.
And if you needed us to be here before eight-thirty, and there was a time.
We couldn't legally do that, because we have enough, so.
Oh, right, you can add to the council, that's true.
Okay.
So we have to do it at eight-thirty.
We can talk to you during the meetings and stuff, there's ways it could work.
Three of us have time.
Seems like a lot of.
Seems like a lot of the questions you have, we cannot answer.
Yeah.
But.
You've opened up our options.
We, we're, we're willing to, I mean, you put up the hoop, and we'll figure out how to jump through it.
You tell us Phase One, Phase Two. You tell us what the resolution you want it to look like that council would approve, and I have to fit the numbers. I want you to know, if you want me to fund a twenty million dollar project, the not-to-exceed will still likely be thirty million dollars because of how you have to do not-to-exceeds, but we can put verbiage in the ordinance, that will give you comfort that PNC can't fund a project larger than X, and that X can be whatever number you say it will be. I need that number to rerun the schedules, create a new not-to-exceed number. So I think we've laid a lot on you, and I apologize, but I hope that we're giving you options that would get whatever is the majority wants to get done.
I have found you being incredibly helpful.
You did a great job.
Chief, would you come up, please?
Thanks.
Alicia, what's, what's the timeline on that process, to run new numbers?
I wonder who with the chief have to say.
If you give me, you have to tell me this is how much the city would be willing to borrow. If you say it's two phases, then you have to go on the best number that you have, whether it's ten or twenty million, and then I have to run a bunch of schedules that literally would take me an afternoon.
So it would be on the next agenda?
It could be on the next agenda, as long as I get the numbers. Do you have to amend the ad?
I honestly don't remember what's in the ad right now. We'd, I'd have to take a look at the ad, um, and then I may have to rerun it.
Yeah, when is the next, uh, voting?
September seventeenth, I think, is the next Wednesday.
September seventeenth, and if we go back, if you had to do an ad, when would you want it and table it?
September seventeenth is a Wednesday, I'd like to run it on Friday, ideally, Friday, the eleventh?
That's a Thursday?
Twelfth.
Okay.
And I'm, yeah.
All I would ask is that you contemplate the sewer authorities, um.
I don't think that one's.
Because that, but what I want you to know is, and the reason why the sewer has two resolutions is because your debt is so closely tied. If you do a resolution, if you don't do a bond issue, it affects what their not-to-exceed amount is because your debt is overlapping. So, if you can vote tomorrow on the correct sewer resolution that Tim will add advice to, we can contemplate what you'd like to do for the seventeenth meeting.
So the sewer revenue, uh, ordinance, for tomorrow would be for the sixty-eight million four hundred and sixty thousand?
But if we were to put through this entire one, we would actually have to drop that down.
Then the, then the sewer revenue, uh, bond would be for fifty-nine million seven hundred thousand. And we're prepared either way.
Okay, so if we don't move forward on our end, would it then go to their max?
It would go to the sixty-eight, yes.
Which would then change our numbers anyway.
I would like to hear the chief's position.
Does, does anybody know if we table this and they redo it on the seventeenth, is that the second reading, or are we going back to the first?
Yeah, yeah, it's the second reading, uh-huh, that's why we're doing it that way.
Versus restarting, yeah, it would be the second.
So, cause I.
Doesn't make a difference, though.
If it's not gonna pass, and we don't know that, I, I don't know that right now, and, and they don't know if it's gonna pass, we have to keep moving. We don't have time. Is, as it is, if you table it, we have just set back everything by two week, two to four weeks because of advertising bids and all that stuff. And before, hopefully, before we leave here tonight, you have a number. And I think that we have a lot more information, information to give you before you pick that number.
Why'd you wait till now, chief?
I, I have asked all, I have asked all of you if you have any questions, if you wanna see the place, anything you need, I have said, call me. So I, you know, I have reached out to everyone.
But we just got the package tonight, so like, we only had part of, like, we.
Well, that's not on me, that's.
No, and I'm not blaming anybody, but I think, like, to shift it all onto council, like, we'll, I think we can only ask the questions with the information we're provided. So if we don't have the full package, we, we don't even know what we have to ask yet, and that's where I've been stuck.
But Adam said October two, the bids are due on Phase One.
And that will get backed up, because if there is no money to pay for that, then there's no sense in going out to bid for it. Well, I mean, I, you know, you guys have said you will fund Phase One no matter what, but I think you have to hear the rest of it and consider more than just funding. Maybe you don't, apparently, there's big, uh, decisions or, you know, thoughts against the entire project, but if you're gonna scale it back, I think you need to hear the whole, the phases and the importance and how it all ties in.
What else with your two readings, it sounds like to me that you could actually pass this on the first reading tomorrow.
We already passed the first one.
You already passed the first one?
Yeah.
Never mind.
And Jasmine and I believe in this. Public safety is number one. Public safety is number one, I mean, I hate to say what's on the news, but, you know, they just had a thing where fifty-seven shots were fired in Chicago over Labor Day weekend. Eight people died, and now the federal people are going into Chicago. Public safety, fire and police are a component of living calmly in your neighborhood, feeling safe. That project is a major role in providing safety, not just for the central neighborhood, but extending out through our entire community. It's, it's expensive, and I do have the feeling that there's going to be, um, that it, it's a federal issue. So they're going to give us grant money for this along the way, that's how firmly I believe in this.
And know that we are after every dollar there is available out there for this.
So remind us when things go out to bid, the first phase is already out to bid, second phase you're looking to put out to bid in November, when would the third phase go out to bid?
Well, the first phase of phase one is done, that's the million for the roof. So the second phase of phase one is gonna go out October, well, the bids will be open on October second, okay? Then phase two of the entire project, if we have a bond and we have the money, we'll be, go out for a RFP for the architects to start with the design process of phase two. That, uh, until we, uh, get the federal money in the spring, we can't move forward with the project, but we are allowed to design it. And that saves us time, so we would start the design phase on that.
Do you know when phase three would go out to design or anything like that?
No, I, I don't know that.
Is that something anyone else knows? Okay.
Tim, you already have sixty-eight on that sort. Was that contemplating this other one not going?
It's easier to reduce it during the meeting than it would be to increase it.
So I, I agree with him, and I, he, different reasons, he has different reasons than I do, but we need to figure this out tonight and tomorrow.
So we're, we're talking about, I have, just trying to throw out an option. We're talking about a, um, thirty million dollar project. Chuck, you've agreed to twenty-five million with no new money.
With no, yeah.
With no capitalization, all, all new money, that doesn't say no, that's, that's an M for million, I'm sorry, my handwriting.
Yeah, that would cover the first two phases, it sounds like, with some cushion.
With a little bit of cushion, and then, um, is there enough support for that going around the table, phase one and phase two?
You can do phase three next year, you know, that's, leave it up to next year, let it be next year's problem, it's not gonna go out to bid till next year. You can issue a new, a new bond next year for it.
I mean, just to help you to get to a number, I don't care what the number is, you know, but, you know, if you, if you're contemplating phase one, and then you're quickly gonna go out for an RFP for phase two, but you're not gonna go out for the RFP for phase two until unless you have the money in place, and you need that before you can even consider a phase three, then there's some art behind what he's saying, insurance doing phase one and phase two funding it now to allow those to occur, and then you can figure out phase three next year.
Well, if we had a compromise, I would go to the compromise of what you're saying.
They were taking out over a million from the ARP interest for capital funds. It's amazing when you think about taking some of that money out for phase one of-
We did, that's what it's, it's for the roof.
That's for the roof?
Yeah, that money, that money from the ARP interest is paying for the roof.
And we need that money over to do that.
Then why are we talking about it now?
That's just the roof, what we're talking about now is the higher-
We voted to move it into the capital fund, and now it's being expended from the capital fund.
Okay.
I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I, so, but you would still need two weeks to put that together.
I mean, it wouldn't be ready for tomorrow morning, because we have some not to exceeds and debt schedules to put together and the like.
Yeah.
But I don't think it will do up, Lisa and I have already been working as if a bond issue was going to be done. If this gives everybody more comfort and it meets all the goals, and it passes on the seventeenth, I will still send, I can send the rating package on the eighteenth, have the rating back in a month, and still sell bonds by the end of October, that should accomplish whatever goals the city wants to accomplish. If the two weeks is essential to getting this exactly right.
Are the favorable nods that they understand her, or that, uh?
Yeah, please tell me if what I'm saying isn't what, if I haven't answered or given you enough to maybe-
I would request the two weeks that we table to get the, this, this set of numbers. I'm more comfortable moving in that direction where we are right now, I will be adamant no tomorrow.
Yeah.
But if we could table, that changes the discussion for me, in my understanding of it.
And then have it on the agenda at twenty-five million for seventeen?
Yes.
They're, they're asking you to, to vote yes, that you're going to, because they're, all their work right now is nothing, and then they're gonna do more work, and then on the seventeenth you have more questions.
I understand, I understand.
They're not gonna be happy with that.
Well, no, I'm, I'm, I'm happy.
I mean, I think they are actually happy, they're getting paid to do that.
Well, no, I want, I don't want to do this in a manner you don't want to do this, I want this to look like what you want it to look like. And this is for the seven of you to discuss, and we will be back here in the morning, and you can tell us what you want the next NOx to exceed, to accomplish for you.
You couldn't just change it to twenty-five for tomorrow?
I don't, I think that structurally changes the ordinance, I don't know that you could.
A different number?
He's gonna have to charge us a fifty percent higher billable, but, uh, it'll be an all-nighter.
We could pay a closing, thank you, uh, although I- We could, we could change the not to exceed to twenty-five.
Uh, you can't change the not to exceed to twenty-five if you want me to be able to sell twenty-five.
Right, that's right, we're not gonna be able to do that until we do the not to exceed.
You could write in there that the bond issue can't exceed a number and give them the protection, but I can't. Please know that if you tell me to do twenty-five, the number on the front cover will never be twenty-five because I'm not selling the bonds tomorrow. And bonds sell at a premium or a discount, and I need room to structure the bonds when I actually sell them. But what NOx can do is write in the resolution that PNC cannot issue more than blank amount in principal, or blank amount in project dollars. He could write that in there, you'd have to pass the resolution exactly as it looks, knowing that any bond issue under thirty million will fit in this box I've created.
Let me really throw a wrench into this, I'm gonna vote for the thirty, what the hell's the difference? If we're gonna go for twenty-five, might as well go for thirty, I'm gonna be dead by the time we gotta worry about paying it back anyway. And we were bouncing around like crazy.
I'm gonna keep you around.
Just, I, I guess, and that's at that point.
You know what I'm saying, five million, what the hell?
He said if you, when Kathy asked the question, what if we don't spend it all? Then you can use it to make the payments or some other-
But we're not gonna issue fifty-two-
Correct, but that was at thirty.
Million, fifty, fifty thousand dollars.
That was at thirty, when we were looking at thirty, she asked the question, you said you could use extra to make payments or some other approved-
Right.
Project, so to Ed's point, if we're gonna do twenty-five, we could do thirty.
But that's still not, isn't it fifty million on the agenda to our worst?
To phase one and phase two, then you just have more left over.
Well, you, the, the issue here is that you, you don't have the ability to impact what is, it sounds like, that city council doesn't have the ability to say to the administration-
Don't exceed this.
Don't exceed this.
Yes.
I can write into the ordinance that there would be no more than thirty million dollars worth of project-
Yeah.
Um, monies issued.
Yeah.
Which would still require a tabling of tomorrow, and then coming back to the seventeenth.
I can put that in for tomorrow.
Would be-
I can go back to the office and write that up and get into what I-
Changing it from fifty-four to thirty?
No, it will still say fifty-four.
Okay.
But I will, can put a provision in there that not more than thirty million dollars is issued, so-
Well, I was, but I-
The fifty-four-
I was saying less than that, cause I was, cause that does all three phases, I'm, I'm saying the first two phases. So I would, I'd be looking at a lower number still than thirty.
May I ask my council colleagues if we could just let us know, maybe it would pass with the full fifty-two? The way it is written currently, the way it was voted on in the resolution, or the ordinance, or whatever, last week, or the last time we met. We affirmed it the last time we met, this is the second vote.
Passed three to two last time.
Passed that one vote, yeah.
Okay, so.
I'm in favor of the, uh, I'm in favor of the three phases.
So you would be with Jasmine and myself for a third?
With the three phases, as explained, I think Chuck just explained that.
So not the full fifty million right off, off the bat, like, breaking it down into a smaller number.
You're in favor of how it's written, or different?
Thirty million?
Thirty.
He's, three issues is what he's suggesting.
There's four, four for thirty, game's over.
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying one and two, I'm, I'm, that's my, that's my middle spot, he's one and two.
I'm at least one, but I'm a, a no on tomorrow, how it's written.
Yeah, so right now we're one, two, three on the ordinance, that's thirty million times fifty-four, so when I said twenty-five, I'm, I'm saying that's two, I understand that has to be above what the twenty is. Like, whatever the number it has to be for the, if, if two phases is twenty million, whatever number it has to be above that, looks like it's forty percent higher or something like that, you know, like, that, that's what I'm looking at.
No, but the next resolution would have more concrete language in there to make sure that what you're telling us is actually what would be accomplished.
So my, my goal would be two phases and that the, that there would be a capitalization of interest.
I like the cap, um- I like the capitalization of the interests, um, that you're suggesting for phase two, I guess, for me, the, I don't really have the, uh, issue with going and voting on phase three. Just because it's gonna need to get done, I'm not quite sure how Mo feels about voting on phase three. Um, I don't know if he wants to vote just the one, the two, like how everybody else does, but, I mean.
We can do three next year.
And that's the thing, is that we're gonna be here next year.
Everybody's in favor of the whole project getting done, it's just that, there's different ways of getting it done. So you're saying all at once, some people saying do it like this, but it sounds like everybody wants the whole thing, it's just how it's about going about doing it.
Good point, Mo.
That's what, that's what we're saying, it doesn't sound like anybody's saying, do one and don't do two and three, don't just leave it unfinished, it just sounds like, you know, that's what I'm hearing.
So you're for the thirty?
One and two, I would be, but I'm, I'm, I mean, we're still gonna do three.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna leave it unfinished, that would be silly.
That's five votes for, for thirty then, so we put them through this for now?
Yeah, so, well, for the two phases, that's the, it's five-
No, thirty, thirty million, supposed to wrap it all up, right, Mayor? Thirty million is it? Make sure how to pay for it as we go.
So it'd be like a twenty million dollar leading to a thirty-six million dollar up to, generally?
Well, we'd have to run the actual numbers.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, in order to have actual numbers tomorrow, and we wouldn't have actual numbers tomorrow.
Yeah, not tomorrow.
So it sounds like you're all, the, the fifty-two, three fifty is the not to exceed of about thirty million dollar project. And it gives Alicia the wiggle room she needs to be able to settle and pass the bonds. You're not going to see fifty-two million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of bond debt. I love it, boy, no kidding, you're not going to see that. If, if you're saying now, we'll agree to spend up to thirty million dollars, then this is your ordinance.
Yeah.
Cause it's saying, because that's, that's the amount you need for the not to exceed. If you're saying we wanna go in for twenty, then we gotta go back and we, we do the numbers, or I can write a revision of this ordinance which specifically says that PNC is only authorized to fund up to twenty million dollars of project monies. And that we can go forward with what we have tomorrow, but it depends on where that number is.
Yeah, twenty million dollars a project is where my number is, I think-
I thought you said thirty.
Thirty.
That's because of the, the cushion that gets built into it of the not to exceed, twenty million dollars projects covers the first two phases.
Yeah, let, let's not focus too much on the not to exceed number, cause I got to plug that into a formula, I think if you give us guidance on what you want this resolution to fund, I'll make that number fit what you tell me.
Yeah, so two phases is what I-
If a fifty-two million dollar not to exceed was a thirty million dollar, then a twenty million not to exceed is still going to be somewhere in the high thirties, close to forty, so.
And just, it was mentioned before, it's not gonna lower the payment all that much.
Nope.
It, it doesn't change the debt service all that much.
I don't think that's true.
Probably costs like three or four firefighters salaries.
If you take this top number and you divide it by three, that's essentially what ten million dollars is, and then if you multiply it by two, that one point five, seven million will probably go down to one point one.
Six hundred thousand.
So.
I don't wanna talk in terms of what people think are relative, that's not fair.
I, I guess what people-
It's only two firefighters.
Need to understand is that whatever amount you're going to get the bond for, you're going to have to have wiggle room for whatever interest and refinancing and everything you're gonna have to do later. Like, I think that that's where we have to understand, that sh- the bond that we're approving isn't gonna be the exact money that the city's gonna get for whatever the project is, cause you still need room, right?
But I think what Tim said is, in the next version of the resolution, he will write that in there specifically that it says, PNC cannot fund projects in ex-
Says it says so.
In excess of twenty million dollars, or whatever you tell me that number is, and then I'll build the not to exceed, but written within the document, that is the protection you'll get, that I can't legally do that.
And that's with the bond being what number?
Whatever you tell me.
Okay.
Whatever you're comfortable funding.
I'm comfortable with thirty.
Mel, you're in thirty?
Yeah. Isn't that where we're at to, for tomorrow?
I thought we was at, uh-
Ask the original, yeah, I'm thinking, get it all done.
Phase three, what is, what is that for?
Each other time. Fifty?
We haven't discussed phase three a lot, there's a lot of, uh, police stuff in phase three, and public works in phase three. After, after phase two, and I'm not trying to say that fire is more important.
I don't care.
But after phase two, fire is pretty much out of it, that's police and public works.
So you're cool with this plan? No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
If, if you're, if you're looking at, my understanding, if you're looking at thirty as a good number, then the ordinance they have in front of you is it. Because the fifty-two is a fictitious number that gives her room to work.
So then we're okay with the way it is, because you're going to just do the thirty?
I can, I can put a project limitation of thirty million dollars in the ordinance.
And we can vote on this tomorrow?
Yes, if we get consent of council that this is-
I would be a no on that, but if you have four votes, you have four votes.
I have two.
Maybe a four.
Most, three.
I like the-
The two phases, yeah, yeah.
Two phases. Two phases.
So what number is that?
That's twenty. Plus the room that you have to cushion it.
I don't know what the hell's going on anymore.
How many phases do you want to do? They're each ten million.
We got the administration saying there's no money there, so we can't do anything. And then we're saying, okay, let's be smart about spending more money, and now we're gonna okay thirty. If it's the well-living council, let it be. But I sure think it's foolhardy. I still think there's money in, in our budget upstairs. There's money I could've taken out of the last couple of budgets, and wasn't able to do it. But it's, money moves around real well. And I just, I sat down here, I said, my main concern was getting the fire situated in that place. But the more people talk, Rocky got him money to waters with his twenty-five million thing, which made it ridiculous, because you're gonna do, you're gonna do twenty-five, you might as well do thirty. It's up to you guys. But I care. Is there a four on the, on the floor for the thirty?
There's three on the floor for thirty.
Four or three?
No, Jasmine and myself.
Then I gotta be the fourth one to get this damn thing done.
Cool, so we'll do tomorrow.
Okay, so we're gonna run the ordinance as is with a new provision indicating that there, uh.
Project ethics.
Project funds to be issued, not to exceed very much. Are you good with that?
Yes.
I just, sorry, you guys had to go through the game.
No, this is what.
This is why they're lawyers.
I'm.
Oh, you're a lawyer.
You're the numbers girl, that's important.
Yeah, numbers are important.
More too kind to tackle being a lawyer.
Is, but, is there any, I, I feel that a lot of people came here, police, public works. Is there, I mean, do you guys have anything you wanna come up and say? And to, you know, talk about this? Because it's just not me. It's just.
In that case, have a good evening.